No order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Boy, didn't we have a nice day today?
Sure did.
And yesterday, for that matter. Yeah, and I hope everyone had, it was a good game. Super Bowl is a good game for once, so, go Lions. It's tough. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufelt.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine here, Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Fisher.
Here.
Hey, we're all present and accounted for. Bill's payable, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion for bill's payable in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents.
Support.
Okay, motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
Yes.
Sandy Kufelt?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have our supervisors' report, and let me pop a cough trap. It's not that long, well, maybe. All right, we always start off with high water, current status, we have high water. It's been holding about, in the river, about five-seventy-seven point three point four. It's literally six, seven inches higher than it was around Christmas time, from all the rain that we had, and it hasn't been dropping. Last January twenty-fourth, the Army Corps of Engineers, on their weekly blurb they put out, and these are numbers from Lake St. Clair, not the river, but it's pretty much the same, has our water being twenty-one inches higher than it was this time last year. And in February, their prediction, it'll go up one inch. To me, I mean, I'm scared. Everybody knows that I've been out doing what I can. The only thing that really might save us is we don't have a lot of snowpack up in the U.P. And, and most of the lakes are not ice-covered, so we have evaporation. But it's scary high. And as, as you all know, I did testify last week at the House Natural Resources and Outdoor Recreation Committee on behalf of Bill five-four-zero-one and five-four-zero-two. It allows locals to, local municipalities to place a no-wake, temporary no-wake law in effect due to high-water emergencies. The way the bill's written, it'll last for two weeks, and then we re-up it, and we can renew it until it's no longer, no longer needed. The committee, I was told, will be voting on it the next time they meet, I think it's in about a week and a half from now. And I, I did talk to some people, other people in the Senate and the House, and they, they were telling me that, you know, they did a straw poll, and it's about eighty-five percent approval in both, so it should, and they're, and they're going to get it, they, they know the urgency, and they're going to get it through the both House and the Senate quick, and have it land on the governor's desk. The MTA, Michigan Township Association, the Michigan Coastline Coalition, and the Michigan Sheriff's Association came out in favor, and there was a couple other groups since then. The Michigan Boars Association is opposing it. But they were there, and I did address some, I mean, I told my, hey, I, I love boating, I own a boat, too. But, you know, when it's a, a difference of someone having a good time, that could, could slow it down a little bit versus people's property being damaged and ruined, I, I know where my vote goes, so. Other things do, going with high water, the, the board had a high-water workshop meeting last week. There was five people present, it was actually the same time I was in Lansing, so I wasn't there. It was approved that we buy a sandbagging machine. And I, I did find one for forty-five-hundred dollars, and it was delivered today, this morning, and it's, it's pretty slick. We checked it out, it's over behind the water department. And we also got a hundred, a hundred thousand sandbags delivered at the same cost that we were buying them from last year. And I packed it on both because there, there was a shared delivery charge. This machine, new, is twenty-one thousand dollars. When I looked at one last year, I thought, no, that's way too much money. We found these refurbished ones for forty-five-hundred, there's really not a whole lot to go wrong on them. We went over it with John at the water department and his guys. And realistically, when we have a crew working on it, this will fill between eight-hundred and a thousand bags an hour. So, which is a good thing, because we're gonna need them. Well, yeah, brand new, well, they said, there's a YouTube video, says you can get sixteen-hundred. That's with everything going perfect with, with maybe a football team and a few other, you know, athletic people on it, but. At the, at the board, at the workshop, the board agreed to, the idea is, I'm gonna try to get community service people and other people to fill these bags. And the board agreed that we would sell the bags, fifty, filled sandbags at fifty cents a bag, right? I still need some direction as what we, what we want to do with unfilled bags, and how are we gonna, exactly how we're gonna distribute it and everything. I, I have a lot of questions, I'm, I'm sure I'm gonna get asked, so. Yeah, I need some help there. It also approved that if we do enact a temporary no-wake law, we can purchase up to twelve no-wake buoys to put in the water. Also approved is to build a burn behind the mainland fire hall, and plugging the drains in the, in the pump, in the park, so we can pump that out, because it was half the parking lot, and the one corner was underwater. And a purchase of three new sewer pumps for our sewer system. I did talk to John about that. These pumps, I mean, they're running constantly now, where normal water conditions, you know, one would be running when it's needed, and the other one would be sitting idle. I asked him what he thought about, let's just put the new ones in now, pull the old ones out, and have them rebuilt, and have those sitting on the shelves. That's something that we may want to look at later.
Good idea.
I mean, sooner or later, we're gonna use them, and. All right, yeah, okay, yeah, John's getting some costs on doing the rebuilds, so. Because we need to be able to flush our toilets. So, oh, the, also approved was installing a manhole and a pump at Marina Drive at Riverside, because they have problems there. That's actually done. They did it Thursday and Friday, and the cost is gonna be less than he originally quoted us. So I'm, I'm not sure exactly what, it went fairly well for him, took two days, and like I say, he dug one hole and was too sloppy to, to do it, so they moved it a little bit and found good ground to do the work needed. The one blighted house at ninety-six, ninety-three forty-six field, the demo actually is being done right now. I drove by it today. The house is down, there's still walls where the basement was, big hole, and they're, they're, the contractor's cleaning that out, too. I also talked to the contractor and the owner about getting rid of all the unnecessary.
Things.
Things, thank you. There, and they're gonna see if they, we're, we're, we're working on that while they're there, because now the house isn't there, it's really in the back, you can see a bunch of stuff, things, unnecessary things. And all the wood back there, he said that he's got that sold, and I did see, some has been removed already, so we're making great strides there. I'll be meeting with the St. Clair County Road Commission to go over the programs that we have going on for this coming year, February twenty-sixth at 1:00 P.M. It's at their office by the airport, if anyone wants to go with me, you're more than welcome. They go over, we talk about different projects, and they go over how they get their funding, what it, what it looks like going forward this year, cost going, their, their cost going forward, like I, I did mention, their limestone's definitely going up about fifteen percent. And that, at that time, I'll get a date when we do the ride-around, when Mike from the County Road will come here, and we'll actually drive around the township and talk about different ditches and roads, so.
Water over road tour twenty-twenty?
Yeah, right, water, exactly. Yeah, he was very happy that we, we did that pumping, and that, you know, helping out Marina Drive, because, I mean, every time it rains, he was there last, not this past week, and the week before, three or four times Saturday and twice on Sunday pumping, and it's just, yeah. Okay, we did agree on a new promotional language for the math, and I'm not hurt back with, I sent him an email about, hey, this is what we agreed on, and, and I know their union guy was on vacation, but I thought it would hurt today, but I didn't. Working on garbage bids, answering questions, I'm actually gonna be given a tour tomorrow for two of the three companies, and showing them what exactly they're getting themselves into by picking up our garbage and recycling. I am still looking for alternate to serve on our zoning board of, ZBA, zoning, zoning board of.
Appeals?
Appeals, thank you.
You're welcome.
If anyone's interested, let me know. I did not have a chance to actually recommend anyone for HIDA yet. I have eight applicants that contacted me. I, actually, I did talk to the Harson's Island St. Clair Flats Association today. They actually received forty people that are interested, and, but they did not give me any names yet. So I will be sure to have my two at the next meeting. I did contact a couple of them for questions, and so anyhow, that should be rolling. I think they are meeting next Saturday. I'm not sure if it's on their agenda to talk about, or where it's at.
They always have their meeting on the second Saturday.
On the second Saturday, so it'd be.
Nine-thirty.
Right. So I'm not sure where they're at in the process. I just wanted to mention, too, we just had a presentation for Hope Not Handcuffs with our, our police, and they are, our police is official. We are in the Hope Not Handcuff program. Maybe, Chief, after you talk about range rentals, you can say a couple words about that. All kinds of Parks and Recs program going on. I know March eighth, we have a bus going to the Red Wings, and that usually sells out, and if you're interested in something, like, and you're on Facebook, like Township Parks and Rec on Facebook, or give us a call, the building department, we got all kinds of stuff going on. So that'd be it for my supervisor's report. Okay, do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Just come up, say your name and address, and have, maybe twist that around, it's kinda.
The podium, the whole podium.
Yeah, there you go.
Public comments and new furniture.
Yeah.
I do it all.
We have some tables in the back.
Hi, everybody. I'm Maureen Borey, and my address is sixty-eight eighty, Middle Channel. And I'm just wondering, once we get these names in, how quickly is the board gonna be put into place, the Harson's Island Transportation Authority?
Well, I'm hoping to have the two, two appointees and supervisors supposed to come to, to our board at our next meeting, and put it on the agenda for our board to either approve or deny it. I'm not sure where the homeowners association is, as far as that, but they have the same process. They select two people, and then we have to mutually agree on one person. And then it all comes before this board, and, I mean, we're not gonna hold on to them. You know, I'm gonna put it on the agenda, and this board will.
So in two weeks, we'll probably make it happen, that's great.
I'm hoping.
Oh, good. All right, well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. What's the date of our next meeting?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth, so, early seventeenth. Okay, any other public comments? Hearing none. Let's go right into the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of January twentieth, special board meeting January twenty-eighth, and the check reports. I also just want to clarify a correction to the minutes of January twenty-eighth. The next meeting is not November. I apologize, it was a old template from the last special meeting we had. The next meeting on those minutes should read February third, twenty-twenty, which is tonight. And also, that Supervisor Bryson and Trustee Oregan did not motion or agree to adjourn, because they were not at the meeting.
If I was, so I would have. Okay, anything on the consent agenda? We have motion support. This really wasn't in the consent agenda, but it was an email, I want, I want to read this email. It was from Ken Cummings forwarded to me, I forwarded to the board. Oh, is it in Georgia? Were you gonna read it? I know I saw it in here. All right, well, the, the body of the message was, this person emailed, and I won't give the name, but this person emailed Ken Cummings from Tri-Hospital. A huge thanks to Chief George Rose for setting up the CPR class at the Harson's Island Lions Hall with our outstanding instructor, Brandon Fay, from Tri-Hospital EMS. I had my training with Brandon a couple years ago on Harson's Island, and unfortunately, I had to use my knowledge from this training at one of our favorite restaurants tonight. So this person, like, wrote this, this, that night. "A person in the booth behind us had a seizure and stopped breathing. She was laying on the floor, unconscious underneath the booth. Our server asked if anyone knew CPR, and I was the first responder that started chest compressions. I get choked up thinking about it now. Someone else at the restaurant was a paramedic and took over from me, and was able to get a pulse until EMS arrived. I'm so incredibly grateful that I attended Brandon's session. He is an exceptional teacher, and it really paid off for someone tonight, and touched many people." Pretty cool.
Really cool.
So you never know how this, you know, little things can really help a lot of people. All right, so we have motion support and a consent agenda. Anything else on that? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have Fire Chiefs before, sorry, Chief.
Okay.
Good evening for the month of January. I only attended two meetings. One was the Homeowners Association over on Harson's Island, and then the Chiefs meeting. We had, month of January for the Fire Department was pretty quiet, knock on wood. We are up twenty-four calls from last year for the month, so. That's it.
Was it even quieter last year?
Yep. We did have, I can tell you, we did have American Red Cross in the canvassing area. They went down Sassy Marine, and they were passing out smoke detectors, and they were also talking to them about emergency operation in event that we have to evacuate and do the high water and, and so forth, so.
All right, very good. Any questions for Chief?
Where'd they pass those out at, Marina? Where'd they pass them out at, Marina?
They went down Sassy Marine, to, down the subdivisions there.
They get a good response from?
I haven't got a full report back on them, but when I do, I'll report to the board.
Great, thanks.
Just a general question about applicants and current situation or staffing. How are you feeling about our current level and what's your intention this year? Would you like to bring out any more?
I do have five applicant, applications on my desk right now. We are gonna set up some interviews next week, and then we're gonna bring some more people on. We're about thirty people.
About thirty right now?
Yep.
Are you finding that creation of your schedules are a little bit easier than a year ago?
They come off pretty quick. I thought a month would, in advance, would be all right, but it seems like, you know, I'm doing it again for March, so. We might look at every two months, if we can, so.
Yeah.
So Chief, I know you are constantly looking for experienced help, kind of saves us on some of the training costs. Unfortunately, I think that kind of restricts us to having local, local people, you know, that can respond, you know, in the middle of the night when it's an all-call. Are we trying to recruit anybody for, even though we may have to do some training for them?
I do have one applicant that doesn't have any whatsoever. In fact, he's still in high school. He'll be turning eighteen shortly, so we're looking at bringing him on. And he is a local resident.
Somebody in town give us more coverage for all calls?
Yep.
Chris, I live, I go by the, our fire department on the island practically every day in the morning, and it's been well-staffed.
That's, that's awesome. I, I just wondered what our intentions are, do, do you have a peak number in mind? I mean, where we would be considered fully staffed?
I think, what was it, to get it, it was like thirty-eight?
Yeah, thirty, we're between thirty-five and thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight to have fully staffed.
Okay. Yeah.
But those people, everybody would have to take a shift.
One shift.
One shift, at least.
So really our goal is to get a more flexible, available staff?
Yes.
Well, I think you're making great progress. Certainly trending in the right direction. That's good.
Thank you.
All right.
You have a high turnover rate, don't you?
Well, it's been a while since somebody's left, so.
I mean, like anything, you know, it's a part-time job, and you train someone, and they get a full-time job, they're, they're gonna leave. Or, I mean, sometimes we can use them part-time, but not as much as we were. If they're got a full-time job, we.
And the problem with that is the unions, you got two different unions in the state, that kind of.
Yeah, they won't let you work at another's place if you're working one. You can't go and work for them anymore.
You have math, and you have IFF.
Right.
Complicated.
Yep.
All right, thanks a lot, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we don't have any unfinished business. We must have finished everything off. New business. First thing is the annual contribution to council on aging. Entertaining motion, this is a budgeted thing that we do every year?
I'll make a motion that we support the annual contribution in council on aging, deriving from line item one-on-one, point two-six-five, point nine-six-five, point zero-two.
Support.
Yeah, motion support. I will say they do all kinds of great things for our citizen and our elderly.
What is the contribution that we give?
Thousand dollars.
I knew that, but I wanted everybody else to know that.
Yep. And it's well appreciated. I'm not sure if they get any local municipalities.
Other than us.
To do that. But they, the state statute allows us to do this, and it's very appreciated and welcomed for everything that they do. Okay, we have motion support, do we?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the annual contribution to the council of aging, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we had a, a little incident with a pickup truck at the water department, needs a little bit of repair. We do have a quote at twenty-seven forty-nine and sixty-nine cents. We have the one quote, and I, myself personally, I don't really want to turn it into the insurance company, because we got a thousand-dollar deductible. So if we did, we'd save seventeen hundred bucks, and, you know, we, without a, a loss, I mean, you know, a lot of times, over five years, they look back, and this might bump our rates up. Over five years, the seventeen hundred dollars, that would be a savings of using the insurance. I, myself, I.
Considering the large fleet we have, I think I would agree with you.
You know, I would suggest that we just pay it and get it fixed. One thing I would probably want to see is maybe another estimate. Just to make sure we're, we're in the ballpark. And so I was, I was, maybe, what, what do you think of doing a, we can approve it, not pay more than this estimate, and as long as we get another estimate, if it's lower, we go with it.
I'll make a motion to approve truck repair on the two thousand fifteen GMC twenty-five-hundred, net to exceed twenty-seven hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Yeah, motion support. Is everyone along, are good with that thinking, or?
Labor is more than the parts, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, they, they gotta, you know, the labor on those things are pretty much locked in to each.
Right. Well, I'd like to see a second quote.
Where does that line item pull from?
It'll pull from five-ninety-one, nine-thirty-one, and five-ninety-eight, nine-thirty-one.
Yeah, we, we share it with sewer, two-thirds and one-third. Vehicle maintenance.
Do we want to?
Is it half?
Do we want to add that into our motion, some way about getting another estimate? Contingent upon another estimate? Is that necessary?
Is that truck drivable?
Yeah. There's a hole in the door.
I think we should let our DPW supervisor handle this.
Yeah.
We have a good motion. We have a net to exceed them out. I don't, I don't think we need to know. My opinion is we.
Press on. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of fixing the two thousand fifteen GMC for twenty-seven forty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents, up to twenty-seven forty-nine and sixty-nine cents. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Police, we have Motorola service agreement. It's a three-year agreement. Go ahead, Mike.
Well, I, I put a few things in front of you there. First one that I put in front of you was our current service agreement, which is four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and seventeen cents a month. I received a correspondence from Motorola here a few weeks back, in which they said, our new agreement, they're bumping it to five-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and eight cents a month. Needless say, I, I wasn't real happy as soon as I heard this, because I'm about sick of these maintenance agreements, and every time you turn around, them going up. Matter of fact, the lieutenant was wondering who I was in my office. It got a little heated. But at the end of the day, if you take a look at it, you'll see that I was able to get that price knocked down considerably. The reason you're seeing, this year, it's pretty much, it's gonna stay the same at the forty, four-eighty-eight. The reason you're seeing it at sixty-three fifty-nine instead of the fifty-eight-hundred is because it's gonna bring us to January, so, which is gonna be thirteen months.
The reason you're seeing it at sixty-three fifty-nine instead of the fifty-eight hundred is because it's going to bring us to January, so, which is going to be thirteen months this next year instead of the twelve months. So one extra month that's in there to get us, that's what they kind of wanted to do as a give and take thing. Then for the next two years, he agreed to only a one and a half percent increase, which is substantially lower than what they did want to hit us with. It's just, it's crazy. Unfortunately, with this, I'll just tell you, Motorola is almost a monopoly. I mean, it is, they've got you by the purse strings and they've got you where they want you because there's no one else. And then the contracts that they have with their equipment, everything says that you have to use them exclusively. And it's very unfortunate. And the problem is, we deal with, through the state with this. And this system is directly connected to the state as well. So in order for us to go forward, it's got to be state-approved vendors who are conducting the maintenance on the system as well. So it kind of does a full circle with this. However, you know, at the end of the day, I told him, I said, listen, I says, I don't care what I'm going to do, I'm going to do something, I'm going to find something. But for you to raise it up, what you're looking at raising it for us is just ridiculous. So at the end of the day, we were able to work it out and we were able to work out a few-year thing. We do not have to pay the three years upfront, that is, each year, but it's locking us in for the next couple of years at that, at that price.
So twenty-one and twenty-two, it's going to go up one percent, one and a half percent?
One and a half percent.
Each year or just?
Each year.
Okay.
Each year. But instead of, I mean, they wanted to go up, whatever they're going to do, probably twenty percent this year they wanted to do.
So it'll be one and a half percent, twenty-one, twenty-two will be another one and a half.
Correct. Roughly, I think it's a little over fifty dollars each year.
Right.
You know, so big difference. So that worked out. At the end of the day, I think, you know, we got something that we could live with and it fits within our budget. And it's like I explained, if you can't come to me in the middle of a budget year and tell me that you're, you're raising us twelve hundred dollars this year. I said, it just doesn't work that way. And it's, it was a new, new person that was handling this now, so he kind of figured things out by the end of it. And at the end, we were talking, we were having a good conversation with each other and I think it went favorable, so.
How often do they come out for services?
They don't. It's one, it's one of the things that really you don't go without. Because it, all it could take is say one, one lightning strike, anything, and you're talking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's one of those insurance policies is what it is. Not to mention, if things did go down, we did not have the maintenance agreement on it. They could tell us, well, we'll be out there tomorrow or we'll be out there the following day. With this maintenance agreement, they'll be out here within a couple of hours, so. And with being twenty-four seven, nine-one-one dispatch center, that's what we have to have.
Where are they coming from? I see East Algonquin Road.
It all depends. I know at one point, they did have a service tech that actually lived in Clay Township, whether he still does or not, I don't know. As of last year, he was still here, but they do have techs that are all around, I mean, pretty much everywhere. So usually, it doesn't take them very long when something goes down for them to be here.
So damned if you do, damned if you don't.
That's pretty much it. I mean, it's like anything in today and it just makes me sick with these maintenance agreements. But the problem is, they know, where do you go? That's the hard part is, where do you go? And they know that there, there's nowhere, nowhere else that you can go. Talking with Ken Cummings from Tri Hospital and Central Dispatch, they're in the same exact boat we are. Same thing. Motorola is quite the conglomerate.
I will make a motion to approve the Motorola service agreement for a three-year term in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars from line item two zero seven zero 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 nine three two.
Support. Yeah, motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote please.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Ardy Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine-else?
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Cuffo?
Yes.
Chris Ried.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have, it's time of the year, isn't it, Mike? Well, this is maintenance, it's for our recording system.
Yeah, I can dive into this one here. This is our recording system, which we had installed in two thousand fifteen. When we had this installed, it was serviced by Microsoft Server two thousand and eight. Well, as of January this year, Microsoft introduced, we no longer service two thousand and eight, so they push no security updates, no security certificates. Everything's done. So with that being said, you're pretty much, you're hanging out there. Which, like anything else, Microsoft does, which you've seen with Windows XP, Windows Seven, everything like that, they come to an end of life. Well, that's what happened with our recorder here. So what they want, what they're proposing is, it needs to be, and it's no fault of this system or the company here, which they've been very good to work with. However, they were caught by surprise like everybody else was that's running this version of the SQL software. The, you know, when I explained to them, I says, you gotta understand, I said, this is something you're hitting me once again in, you know, already in our budget year and something that wasn't budgeted for. They agreed that, okay, we, they would do the service now, they would not bill us until the next fiscal year. So that we're up and running with this and we're not taking, we don't have to worry about issues of any kind of security issues or anything like that. I mean, it's something we have to address, it's something we have to have. This is a recorder that records both our emergency, non-emergency lines, our nine-one-one lines, our radio traffic for both police and fire. So this is something that we use quite heavily between us, prosecutor's office, across the board. But it's one of those things, once again, it is end of life that it comes with and they've got you stuck. And for the price that we're looking to upgrade this system, we're not going to touch if we even tried to replace it with someone else. And really, this company is pretty much the standard throughout the market. Anybody that you talk to that is using the, using it in the same fashion that we are, this is pretty much the recorder that's being used. So with that being said, we're, we're at the point, we don't have a choice. We need to do something, we need to get on board with it and upgrade it. They're, they are not going to have anybody available. Probably it's going to be March till they can even get out here because they're getting hit with it across the board. So they're talking March, they can have somebody out here and I really don't want to leave ourselves hanging in the wind any longer than that.
So a couple of questions. What was the original warranty on that? Since we purchased in two thousand fourteen, implemented in two thousand fifteen, what was the warranty on that?
The warranty itself is only a one-year warranty and then we have a maintenance agreement on that, like everything else, that we, we pay a yearly maintenance agreement on this. That yearly maintenance agreement covers most parts, all labor and a twenty-four hour service on it.
All right, Mike, I didn't ask you this before, but will this replace our current server?
What, yes. Well, yes and no. It's going to replace all the hardware and components to this. So it's upgrading all this hardware, all the components, along with the, the SQL, the, the server software, so.
SQL on there, which.
Which actually, if you look at it and you know, it's not a bad price.
No, it's not.
They're, they're really, they really did a good job as far as getting the price down as far as they can for us because they know it was no fault of ours or theirs, but they're trying to do the best they can to keep it from beating us up.
Yeah. So the Word System, was the operating system for that?
No, Word System is actually the company name. They're actually a large international company. They, the system, the original our system was with a company called Van Belcom, which more, was more of a local system. Word Systems bought them out. Much bigger, way bigger company. And since, since, I gotta say, I mean, we, we've had pretty good luck with them. They've been pretty good to work with. They're servicing, everything's been, been really good.
Yeah, the operating system will be Microsoft's SQL, SQL Server.
SQL Server.
It's for managing databases.
Yeah, something above my pay grade.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, so you're going from just the regular Microsoft up to the?
Well, no, we are actually, we're with SQL right now, but it's basically where you look at it is, it's like they took Windows Seven and made it end of life. Same thing with the, the Server two thousand eight. Now you're going up to, I think it, what is it on here, Server two thousand twelve, is it sixteen?
Sixteen.
Server sixteen, which bumps it up. They have Server twelve as well. Server sixteen's one past that, so it usually takes them quite a few years before they end up, end of life in it. You got twelve was going to go down first and then sixteen, so we'll have some lifespan out of this. But that is same, same concept. When Microsoft starts, stops servicing it, then they no longer push updates. Then they never, no longer push any kind of security updates. So any, anything new that's happening out there in cyber world, you're not protected against it.
Chief, it seems to me that we talked about a nine-one-one backup service. Less than, I don't know, probably three, four months ago.
Well, this isn't a backup service. This is a recorder. What this is, is we go into the system and I can go in and listen to the conversation between our patrol cars and dispatch, between fire department and dispatch. Anybody who calls our non-emergency lines, anybody who calls in nine-one-one, which nine-one-one and our radio traffic is a big thing, especially when it comes to court proceedings.
Does that have a, does that have a separate recording system?
No, this is all together. This, this system right here is, the system records everything within our building.
So maybe a few months ago, I remember having a discussion about this, although I can't remember the finer details, was that maybe preemptive? Did you know this was coming?
Yes. Yeah, I let you guys know that this was coming, this was a couple of months ago, that it's something that we're looking at, but they were trying to figure out what they were going to do as far as structurally to remedy the problem. Yeah, this, this right here, the only thing this does for our nine-one-one or anything is, is just purely recording. So no different than our, our dispatch, if they, if somebody calls in nine-one-one, let's say they call in nine-one-one and give quick information and then boom, you lose them. They can go back to an instant retrieval, listen to this conversation that they just had to get information, say it could be address, anything like that, any pertinent information that, it happens that fast. Same thing when it comes to court proceedings. Let's face it, people say different things when they get to court than they did in the heat of the moment when they call. So this is something that also covers us that, okay, this is the reason we responded. You made the nine-one-one call, this is what you said when you made the nine-one-one call, here it is, this is in your own voice, so.
Okay.
So this interfaces with the rest of the systems we have over there?
Yes. This integrates with everything we have, our phone system, nine-one-one system and our dispatch council itself.
What's the life expectancy on this?
On this one? Don't know. That all depends on Microsoft, once again, but I would have to say, I would have to say probably at least a good ten years, yeah, yeah. It's usually about what this, what sticks around, so. Believe it or not, two thousand sixteen is the newest model out. No different if you look at like Microsoft Office and that right now is sixteen version, that's the same as what this is. So it's the latest that's out.
So the potential for upgrades for this one are more likely than not?
Right, yeah. We shouldn't have any issue with this for quite a few years. I would imagine by the time we've got to replace this because of software issues, we're going to probably be ready for hardware issues and replacement.
This wasn't a budgeted item, so they agreed to bill us in July?
Yes. Yeah, I didn't want to wait till July and they agreed as far as that goes, would not want to wait till July, especially we see everything going on in cyber world, everything now.
Can we ask them if our old server has any value? Will they give us a little kickback?
That's all part of it.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's already built in.
Yep. Because they are using what they can from it and that's all they got to price down as far as they could for us, so.
That's a pretty good price.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the recording system EOL upgrade, eight thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars out of line item two zero one six MS SQL Server to be built in July.
Mark?
Yeah, motion of support. Hey, Mike, does that also include the, the labor of them setting it up and the migration and everything?
Yep, that's, that's everything included within this. Yeah, everything that you see here will be getting us back up and running.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of purchasing the recording system EOL upgrade for eighty-six ninety-four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
I will say one thing real quick is with, and it says a lot for the system itself, is this system has been up and running since two thousand fifteen and has never shut off. Never.
Twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four seven. With pretty much everything we, most of the things we have over there are twenty-four seven. And that's kind of where we go as far as any kind of maintenance with anything is, you, you kind of look at the best you can with your life expectancy. And that's why not long ago, we replaced our, our regular servers throughout the building too. So everything we do is, we're, we're there twenty-four seven, so everything's running twenty-four seven.
SQL Server is pretty robust. It just keeps on going. That's what's on, runs our BSNA database too, is in the background is SQL Server. All right, police range rental.
Okay. Well, we're coming up on one of our semi-annual qualifications for firearms qualifications on the range. This one here is one that's mandated by the state that we do this one through the MCOS curriculum one time a year. We tried to get in a while ago with Macomb and they are booked all the way through May. And this is something we need to get done before the summer months are gone. We usually pay them eighty dollars an hour. There's a new range that was opened up on Michigan Street, up near the Sheriff's Department up there, and it's actually owned by one of our local Border Patrol agents. And hearing nothing but good about it. Port here on PD's been using this range as well. It sounds like they got a pretty good setup as far as the long guns as well. We are going to pay twenty dollars an hour more, however, it sounds like quite a bit more comes with it and they're able to get us in. To where next couple of weeks, we're going to be able to be in there and training and getting that done, so.
Did you say that was a one-time cost for the year?
Yes. Yeah, as far as, well, we usually do twice a year, but what we're in the motion, we're motions right now taken care of is, in, instead of doing an indoor range like this twice a year, which is a little costly, what we're doing is all the firearms instructors, I'm getting them a membership to Perch Point. And then at Perch Point, we can go out and use the range with the firearms instructors having their memberships, which is going to be, costs us around six hundred dollars a year. But the nice thing with that is we can use their facilities anytime they want. If we have a new hire or somebody has to get out, we have to qualify them, we can go down there anytime and do this. You know, it's right around the corner. It's not ideal for your winter shooting, obviously, but the other thing that's nice for is the distance with the range for our long guns as well.
So that won't interfere with my trap shooting on Monday?
I think you'll be good.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the blue steel range rental in the amount of two thousand dollars coming from line item two oh seven zero 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 nine six zero.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support. Any more discussion? Is it coincidence you're going to be shooting stuff on Valentine's Day or?
Thought about that.
Okay. All right. We have motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of range rental for the blue steel range, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, if I, I was going to ask the board, I was waiting to see how long, we've only been here less than an hour.
Chief, could you talk about the Hope Not Handcuffs?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The Hope Not Handcuffs is a program that it started in Macomb County here approximately three years ago. And it was through an organization called Families Against Narcotics. And it's, it's, it's a group of people who got together and said, listen, we need to do something to try to fight this problem, fight the addiction and basically trying to wrest your way out of it, it's not going to work. In doing so, the local police departments have really started getting on board with this because same concept. We're not going to wrest our way out of it. Obviously, in, in some instances, we don't have a choice. These are some of the things we have to do. However, if there is an alternative that we can get somebody help, instead of going the ladder, let's do that. This is a program that they brought to us here. We've been working with them probably about the last five months or so on getting this all put together. Putting together a policy on this, putting together everything that covers our department as far as liability wise or anything like that. With this program, it's basically if somebody walks into our department, says they're looking for help, at this point, we bring them in, they remain anonymous. We will then call somebody for the, from the Hope For Not Handcuffs, they leave a package at our department, which are some, some items that go out to the person that's coming in to help them, make them a little more comfortable while they're there with us. Usually their response time. while they're there with us. Usually their response time is probably gonna be about a half hour or so. And then from there, they will take that person for treatment, and they've done a lot of things on their end as far as setting up with the different organizations to get these people help. And everything that I'm seeing from it is, the help is, is, they're getting these people help a lot quicker than if we were to be trying to do this or anybody else. They've opened up some channels that they're able to really fast-track some of these programs for the people and get them into. But at the same time, it is a voluntary program. But I, I just, you know, I think it's something that we needed to kinda, ourselves get involved with as well. Port Huron PD has gotten involved with this, we've worked pretty tight with them in the inception of this program, and I think you're gonna see more and more. I think they said there's ninety police agencies right now that are involved in this, and they've already helped over thirty-eight hundred people. So, I mean, let's face it, we have a problem, we gotta try to figure out some kind of solutions, and I think this is definitely a start in the right direction. And, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, if we can educate or help somebody opposed to arresting somebody and watching it spiral, we'll take this option.
Are we gonna get the word out that we're doing this now?
Well, they, they, they have a media, a person that works their media alone, that'll be putting all this out there. You will see, tonight, we just incepted this program tonight into our department. They, actually, right before this meeting, that's what we were doing. And this is something we'll have up on our Facebook page, as well as the Townships page. Cindy Babish has been working with me on this as well, and helping promote this, as well as training, which they call their training Angels. And it's an angel training, they're, we're hosting one tomorrow night at our police department at six o'clock. So anybody who wants to come down for that, it'll give you all the information that you want as far as what you can do if you wanted to be somebody that is part of Hope Not Handcuff and come, come in and help these people.
That would be Tuesday evening the fourth, just for when this is recorded.
Yep, tomorrow, Tuesday the fourth. And it'll be at our police department, and we welcome anybody that can, can show up.
I did read about that a while back, and...
You're, you're seeing, it's, it's starting to go national now.
Yeah, thanks for jumping on board with it.
You know, I, I think it's, I think it's gonna be a very good program. You know, one thing for us, it's a little, little better is, you know, some of the smaller departments are not open twenty-four seven, they're only open till four or five o'clock or something like that, so it's, it's a little more difficult. With us, at least, we're open twenty-four seven. They can come into our lobby at any time, and then, you know, we're gonna be able to house them until somebody can come in and take care of them. So, you know, it's a little difficult for some of the agencies, but I know I've talked to some of the other agencies in, as Port Huron as well, hey, if you gotta send them our way, send them our way. I mean, we're here, that's not a problem. I'd rather, you know, if we can be a buffer in between there, let's, let's do it. So we're here anyway, so. Uh, it'll be at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, at the police station.
Yep. Be in our training room.
Hope Not Handcuffs.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, they, they do a pretty good job in there, you know, they try to get the person who's asking for help or needs help in the right facilities quick. We were talking to them tonight. They'll either get them, well, there's two of them in our area, one, well, in Macomb County, Sacred Heart, or Meridian in Waterford, but they said, you know, there's a place by Flint that has open beds. He goes, they'll drive them up there.
And this is drugs or alcohol.
Yeah, drug or alcohol.
So whatever it is.
Proactive approach to, to a very difficult problem.
Yeah, I, I mean, we gotta start somewhere, you know, let's face it.
One of the country's biggest problems, so.
Yeah, let's try to get the people help, you know, 'cause I do believe there's a lot of people that are out there that would like to get the help, but I have no idea where to start to get it, so. If we can open that door, that, and it lets them know, you know, we're not here just to, you know what I mean, find you on your, on your low point and arrest you, we're here to try to help you get to that next step and help you out. I mean, that's, that's what it comes first and foremost with us, is, is helping educate as well, so.
Very good, very good.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask the board if they entertain, if having about a ten-minute discussion on sandbags? I need direction, I'm getting all kinds of questions, and I don't know how the board's gonna want to react to different things. I know we talked about a workshop that I wasn't at. Can we amend the agenda to have a ten, fifteen-minute discussion?
I think that discussion will probably be more than ten or fifteen minutes. I mean, I have some, I have some data, pros and cons, not with me, 'cause not for this meeting, but I think, you know, maybe another workshop with the rest of your emergency preparedness committee might not be a bad idea.
Okay, I mean, we can, 'cause, I mean, I, I mean, my questions are, are, are we gonna be, what are we gonna be doing with unfilled sandbags? And are we gonna be supplying sand or not, like we did last year? IRIS not supplying sand, they're giving sandbags away. There's some communities that are giving it all away, but they don't have the size of the issue that we have. I talked to the city manager in New Baltimore, who's a resident here, and they're just giving them, giving it all away, but they don't have two or three streets that are, and have issues, where, you know, it's like fifty percent of our township does. And then the hours, we're, we're going to make the, everything available too, so.
I, I, just, my comment would be, I'd like to see us have another meeting when you are there and Chris is there.
Well, listen, you wanna set it up right now?
We might as well, because we had a good discussion, I think.
I'm gonna be gone Wednesday and coming back the following Monday. I'll be back, so I'm available at the eleventh or anytime after the eleventh.
Eleventh is the Muskrat dinner, isn't it?
Yes, Tuesday, yeah. I'll be, I'll be at the Muskrat dinner Tuesday night. Want to do the thirteenth, or?
That's, what day is that?
It's a Wednesday, or no, Thursday.
Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday next week?
We don't have a ZBA meeting then, no.
I'd prefer the twelfth, personally.
Okay.
Taking care of the twelfth.
Think I can do the twelfth.
Hey, after the Muskrat dinner, your guys are brave. What time?
You don't have to bring leftovers.
We can bring leftovers.
No, please.
What, what time?
What did you have, what did you do last time, eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Are you guys all available?
What, what day? I can't shut it off. Gotta get my calendar up. What day?
Tuesday the eleventh.
Wednesday the twelfth.
Wednesday the twelfth at eleven AM.
Wednesday the twelfth.
Is the proposal.
At eleven o'clock.
Tuesday the twelfth.
Wednesday the twelfth.
Wednesday the twelfth.
The day before your range shooting.
Yeah, we're gonna have, I...
How about you guys?
The eleventh?
Yeah, twelfth.
The eleventh, I have elections, training in Port Huron.
What about DPW?
They, they can be there.
It's twelfth work?
We can do it without Mike. What's that? Twelve's better?
Chief Rose?
Okay.
So eleven o'clock on Wednesday, eleventh?
Want to do eleven or twelve?
February twelfth.
Is there, is there another time if you get things just around, chief, that would work better for you?
No, no, that should be okay.
Stated again. Stated again.
Eleven AM, February twelfth, Wednesday. Twenty-twenty.
Okay, well, the workshop is open to the public, eleven AM, February twelfth. Here. On sandbags. So anyone with questions, they're gonna have to wait.
Sandbagging.
All right.
Pizza, we did pizza.
Okay, actually, why, why don't you give us about ten minutes, we'll adjourn, and we can come up and talk about it. Okay, yep. All right, that being said, board member comments, Cindy? Mark?
Planning Commission, we had a Blue Horseshoe meeting, we approved the site plan. That'll, and the master plan, we have a joint meeting scheduled in the month of February, probably towards the end, so.
Do we have a date yet?
Not, not, not yet, no.
I haven't heard.
I'll talk to Kathy about it. That's it.
Joanne?
Um, I would just like to make a comment about the zoning board of appeals is not a zoning board.
No.
And people think, they'll just say, when I, if I go to the zoning board, they really mean the zoning board of appeals. It's two different things. The zoning is with the planning commission. The zoning board of appeals is where you get permission to break.
Break the law.
Break the law. And so, a lot of people don't understand, stand the difference.
Yeah, get a variance from it, thank you.
I'm breaking the law.
Well, that's what it amounts to, yeah, that we give them permission to break the law.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, which is the law of...
Because the ordinance doesn't fit all situations.
Yeah, yeah, right, which we need to be working on here pretty soon.
How are we doing down there, Sandy?
I'm doing great, how are you?
Good.
I wanted to put something out there about the Great Gatsby Gala.
Yes.
I'm sure you were gonna speak of it as well, but last year's event was very well-received. They're doing it again on Friday, February fourteenth, from seven to eleven, at the VFW in Elginak. I think tickets are thirty-five dollars, and looking forward to seeing everyone in their twenties attire. That's all I got.
Chris? Um, yeah, just, just a shout-out to the first responders. We just, the, the fire department's really got some good momentum going, we've got equipment being ordered, training in progress, and, you know, the police department, it's just, they're all over the place. When I, when I visit other communities and stuff, and, you know, you, you see the, the police, and they're stopped here, and they stop there, and you get, you get your spots, but Clay Township is absolutely all over the place. I, I can't even imagine how many miles they put on those vehicles throughout the course of a year. So I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that they have such a presence. I know it, it's not free, it comes with a cost, but we live in a, a very safe community, and I'm grateful.
Thank you.
You know what's coming?
I'm sorry, yes.
I just want to remind everyone that it's winter tax bill time. The winter tax bills are due, not this Friday, but the following Friday. We're open on the fourteenth from nine AM until five PM.
So basically what you're saying is the taxes are due on Valentine's Day.
Yeah.
You're gonna be here.
And I'm gonna be here.
The funny, everyone can say all positive stuff, Chrissy the treasure, pay your taxes, that's what I was laughing.
Please pay your taxes.
Please pay your taxes.
She likes everyone so much, she's gonna spend Valentine's Day here.
Give out the candy hearts.
Yes.
To, to embellish on what Sandy said, the twenties gala, it's the Great Gatsby Gala. It's for the Elginak Clay Community Foundation, which, full disclosure, I'm the chair of it. And it's to raise money, we give away, every year, we give away between, or actually, this last year, we gave away thirty thousand dollars in scholarships and/or grants to organizations all within Clay and Elginak, like service organizations, if they're doing a project or this or that, we gave just a whole slew of, I know the, the museum and the maritime, or the Elginak Clay Historical Museum, the one on Harson's Island, we've, we've done a lot. And on Brown's Field, we've done stuff over there, and, and it's just a great, it's a great thing. And we do, we do two fundraisers a year, and like I say, it's pretty cool to give away thirty grand a year. And this is a fundraiser for that, and it, it's fun, we, boy, last year was fun, this is the second time we had it. We actually have a twelve-piece twenties orchestra called The Bees and the Eas coming, and it's just a good time. And just on that, I'm just, you know, we, we have a lot of positive stuff happening in the township. I know we have high water and, and stuff like that, but in the near future, we're gonna have some announcements of pretty cool stuff. So I'll just leave it at that, and does anyone wanna make a, our next meeting's February seventeenth?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, looking for more support. All in favor, ayes.
Aye.
Yeah, come on up, just come on up.